Okay, I called and ordered the Lowell City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, November 2nd at 7:04. Roll call please.
Mayor Bennett.
Yeah.
Councillor Harris.
Here.
Councillor Stratus.
President.
Councillor Myers.
Here.
Councillor Weathers.
Here.
Oh, ready and counted for. Okay, we'll start with the pledge. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize Mr. Dean Ray. He's our Highway 58 reporter that does the blog. So if people have read the things that he's written, that's the man. Quite a talented person, too. Interesting person. Welcome, Dean. Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything they want to add, subtract? Okay, not seeing anything. Next up is the consent agenda. We don't have anything, right? Only consent agenda.
Correct.
That's... Okay, next up would be public comment. Anybody want to speak tonight? Not seeing, not hearing. Council comments, anybody? Not seeing, not hearing. Okay, we went along. First item of business is, we don't have staff reports. So next thing would be the public hearing. So for that, we'll recess the regular session at 7:06. We'll convene the public hearing at 7:06. And the public hearing is being held pursuant to RS 221 725 concerning the sale of City of Lowell real estate property located at 205 East Main. Mr. Carter, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an additional public hearing for the sale of 205 East Main Street. We already held a public hearing on September 21st. At that public hearing, the city council heard testimony from citizens on what they wanted to see for that property. At the conclusion of that meeting, the city council directed me to negotiate a contract with Lowell Investment Properties LLC. Now that we have the details of that contract worked out and with it being the next item on your agenda, we have a public hearing for any interested members of the public to offer comment on that contract. A summary is as follows. This would be to sell 205 East Main Street to Lowell Investment Properties for $375,000. The city is required to acquire the adjacent lane county right of way and include that in the sale. The city would also retain an option to repurchase the property if substantial development has not occurred within five years. That concludes my staff report.
Any questions by the council? Okay, anybody wanting to speak in favor of the sale? Anybody want to speak against the sale? Okay. In that case, not seeing anybody, not hearing anybody. The public hearing is closed at 7:08. The regular session is reconvened at 7:08. Next up is a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase and sale agreement and receipt of earnest money. Mr. Carter, you want to speak to that? That's on page seven, if you're following.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this has the actual contract, and that's included in the packet. Our city attorney, Gary Darnell, is here in case there are any legal questions for him. And Suzanne, are you on the line? Okay, our broker was not able to join us tonight, so we'll do the best we can to answer any questions. So that this contract, this, this motion would authorize me to execute the contract once the conditions of purchase are satisfied. And those conditions are to acquire the right of way and to have it to where we could turn it over or, or sell it to the buyer as part of this transaction. We need to remove the vacant house and clean up the debris. The burn is scheduled for Saturday, and we have contractors that will want to schedule next week to clean it up. We have to complete a Phase 1 environmental assessment and turn that report in. Once those are satisfied, I'll sign the contract documents and we'll close on the property. There's also an addendum whereby the city retains an option to repurchase the property. If substantial development has not occurred in five years. The buyer is also required to turn in an annual report on their progress. And we are also agreeing to waive SDC fees as a part of the sale. So that's a summary of what I'm asking for tonight. Again, the city attorney is here. If he has anything else to add or if there are any questions for him.
Any questions by the council? Yes.
What's your discussion with county about the timeframe for the right of way transaction?
We, we, I have signed the option agreement, and we've mailed them a check, and it's in their office, and we're just waiting to get a signature back from them.
What's your timeframe?
Gary, did, the question was timeframe for getting an executed copy back from the county on the option agreement. Do you know the answer to that?
I, I didn't get an answer to that, but my assumption was in a couple of weeks.
So in other words, it's not going to drag out?
It shouldn't. They've been very forthright in working with us. They had their surveyor provide us with a, a legal description fairly quickly. And we've gone through the county council, who has placed it before the, the county manager with a recommendation to approve. I don't think we can do anything more.
It doesn't have to go to commissioners then, just the manager. Okay. Any questions more of Mr. Carter? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase and sale agreement and receive for earnest money, as well as an option agreement with Lowell Investment Properties LLC for sale of 205 East Main Street in the amount of $375,000 contingent on completion of the conditions to purchase.
I'll sign it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay. We have other discussion or questions? Not seeing any, not hearing any. All those in favor of a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase and sale agreement and receive of earnest money, as well as option agreement with Lowell Investment Properties LLC for the sale of 205 East Main Street in the amount of $375,000 contingent on the completion of the conditions of purchase. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Next up is
Thank you, Gary.
Next up is a presentation by Penny Hummel. That's on page 34 of your packet. Mr. Carter, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, we have Penny Hummel with us tonight to give a presentation on a proposal that I asked her to turn in. Penny worked with us earlier this summer when we kicked off the design process for the library and I've asked Penny to put together a proposal to, to help us on the operations side. And with that, I'll turn it over to Penny to talk about her proposal and to reintroduce herself. Thank, thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, good, good evening, everybody. I'm Penny Hummel, and I think I've met most, if not all, of you on the council. It's great to be back here today. I'm here to kind of provide information about the proposal that Jeremy asked me to put together, answer any questions you might have, and just be a resource in that respect. I'm a library consultant based in Portland. I, the areas that I focus on are facilities planning, organizational development, marketing, and fundraising. And this is based on my background as a small-time library director. Small town, I should say, not small-time, library director in Canvey. And before that, I was on the senior management team at Multnomah County Library in Portland. And before that, I was president of the library here in Multnomah County. So I've worn a lot of hats in library land, and I put on different ones depending upon what I'm doing. And this project, I think, is a, is a wonderful opportunity to bring the library back to life. I know the planning has been underway for the facilities, and it's been great to be part of the, the team that Wilson Architecture put together to do that. And, but as you can imagine, running a successful library, there are a lot of details in the operation. And so I specialize and work with small and rural libraries. I've, as I, I put some information in the packet. I've worked in Roseburg, where they were starting a library kind of from scratch in a new way. I've worked in Yahaats, which is an all-volunteer library, transitioning to having a staff person. And I've worked with a lot of other smaller libraries. So I think one of the great things in a smaller community is how connected the library is to everyone. It's such a big presence. And so we have a great opportunity here to do this. So what, what I tried to do in my proposal was kind of give some examples of the kinds of things I think that we need to undertake to, to bring the library to life from an operational standpoint. I will say that this is just kind of a guesstimate on my part. We'll, we'll get in there and see what needs to be done. But, you know, I think, I think the capacity of this, we will, you know, we will be good for this. And my goal will be, as much as possible, where there are activities, we can, you know, collect and gather and mobilize volunteers to do the work. Part, part of the, the plan, I think, is we need to build back the volunteer, you know, the set of volunteers who, who work at the library. The goal of the city, as I understand it, is to hire a library director in the future. So I would be supporting that effort with, with, you know, my knowledge of networks on how to promote that. I can assist however the city wants me to help with that. So I broke down the scope of work into several different buckets. The first one is just general project management. One of the challenges of opening a library when you don't have a library director is who's, you know, who's going to do it? So the way I see it, I would be providing that in a targeted way, the kind of expertise that you need. Looking at the libraries, integrated library system, which is the catalog and the record of books, is that adequate? Do we need to make an adjustment on that? Developing policies. Working with the city to create a library advisory board, which is one of the requirements you need for a public library. Supporting, you know, budget work. Connecting with other libraries in your county to see if there are collaborative opportunities. I already have those relationships based on other work I've done. A couple of them have been my clients previously. Providing support for grant writing. And if there's any future input, the architectural team needs from me, also offering that. So that is one bucket. The next one is collection management, which is, you know, develop, developing a plan for that, evaluating the current collection. Maggie Osgood, you know, created such a wonderful legacy for your community with the library. But library's been closed for a little while. Materials do get older. There have been a lot of donations that need to be kind of gone through and decide what, what will be kept and what won't. And to do that, you kind of have to have a plan to do that. And kind of looking at what the gaps are that you might want to fill for the future. So then the next bucket would be what I called staff and volunteer management, and that would be supporting the hiring of the director, also sort of trying to build the volunteer program up a bit. So when that director comes on board, there are some people already to work with, to fill, to fill slots at, at the desk, if that's the plan you want to go forward with, to shelve, to do other, other aspects of that. And then lastly, I put marketing and communications, because there are a lot of materials, both for a website and print, that you're going to need to talk to people about the library, what kind of social media you might want to be doing. And just in general, supporting, rolling that out, supporting the city's efforts. So the community is well-informed about what's happening at the library. And we, you know, solicit volunteers, for example. Everything supports everything else. So as a rough estimate, you know, I estimated, you know, starting with 75 hours of consulting time, that, as I said in my proposal, that's capacity, will really only use the hours that you need me for. And I, I have a full cadre of other clients right now, which is wonderful. So I'm, I'm only interested with everybody in, you know, supporting what I can support, empowering people in each community to do the work with, with my input. So, let's see, what else can I say? We also, I sort of put in this proposal kind of estimating, I might have three trips to Lowell to, to do various aspects of this. And, you know, we'll see what that's, you know, what, what is needed in that, but that was kind of part of the estimate. And so the, between my hourly rate and the travel, the total for the contract is $14,970. And, you know, we would just kind of get, I would sit down, if, if this is approved, sit down with Jason, kind of work out a work plan of what, what he needs next, what ways I could support things, get the ball rolling. And I will just say that it has been a pleasure working in Lowell thus far. It's very exciting to me to be part of reopening a library under these circumstances. So it's work that's dear to my heart and, you know, is, is just very exciting. So that's kind of the overview of what's in the proposal, which I hope you've had a chance to look at. And, you know, at this point, I would welcome any questions you have about what I've submitted.
Any questions? Go ahead, Cory.
Penny, you know, COVID has really thrown a curve
Yes.
everyone. Most of these consulting engagements have been pre-COVID. How do you see COVID changing how particularly small communities, given that, given that so many more people went online and have learned Zoom and things? I mean, I'm never going to travel to a conference again in my life to go sit in a conference room to hear somebody speak, you know, that
Right.
for a conference business, you know, but how do you see that changing library operations, particularly in small communities going forward?
Well, I think that's a really great question. I think we're going to be, need to be mindful when we think about how the work's going to be done in the library, that there are spaces where people are not right on top of each other, number one. And so part of that is, you know, in the design of the space. I think we're going to need to get creative about if we're wanting to develop a volunteer, a group of volunteers, you know, maybe four to six people to start, that we figure out ways we can connect with people initially online, provide training online initially. There is a certain amount of work with this project that's going to have to happen in the actual former library, you know, to look at the collection, et cetera. But, you know, I guess what I've seen in my consulting since COVID is I have clients I've never met in person that were doing entire projects all on a distance. I have one that's, it's a rural library system in Eastern Washington. I have another one. We did an entire facilities plan myself and a IT consultant in California that I, we, we never met in person. So I think we're all more and more accustomed to using Zoom where it is appropriate. And so working within those confines and where we do need to have an in-person meeting, creating a way to do that in a socially-distanced way so that people are comfortable. You know, it's really too soon to tell, looking at it longer than that, whether people are going to be comfortable volunteering in the new environment that we're in. And that may impact how services are provided. I guess my perspective is, and again, I come from, you know, I have a master's in library science. I've worked in libraries for decades, but I also started out as a library volunteer myself. I started out sorting books for the Friends Book Sale, the Sheet Music, to be specific, because it's a big sale in Portland. Is that volunteering is a, is a really critical way, aside from helping to get work done, of engaging the community in the work of the library. So thinking about ways that people can be in space when there aren't a lot of people around, you know, just understanding what people's concerns would be about that and trying to work around it and find a way to involve people and, you know, ma- make that viable. Because part of what, why people like to volunteer at libraries is they want to be in the space with the books. They want to meet people. So libraries all over the country right now are managing that in different ways, trying to figure out that solution that keeps everyone safe, that, that maintains an environment that's welcoming and, and healthy. So.
I was more reaching on the, the, the patron side, not the delivery side.
Oh, okay, okay.
I've learned how to go online because schools were forced and people were forced to go online. So I wasn't really worried about the delivery side.
Oh, okay, okay. I can answer that, too. Well, so what we're, what we're seeing in libraries is that there's been an upward bump in the use of downloadable or electronic resources. And that many libraries have increased the budget for that aspect of their collection. Now, your library historically has not had those resources. You've had just a, a print or physical collection. So that is something that we're going to want to look at. It's one of the reasons why, you know, exploring what it would take to be part of the consortium of other county libraries that they already have would be of benefit. The state, there is also a program, the Oregon Digital, I'm going to get this wrong, Oregon Digital Resources, but it's basically you can buy, to be part of this consortium that has one big electronic collection. And it's a cost-effective way for smaller libraries that don't want to just buy their own, their own electronic resources and make them available. And that's actually discussed in the report I did for Yahaats, because they were in the same issue. They didn't have electronic resources. So.
So, so I was interested in that. My second question, I don't want to take all night on this issue, but I also read some of your reports. And what ideas, you mentioned the sales marketing kind of aspect. What ideas do you have to increase participation in developing what services people want? Because there was an awfully small percentage of people, number of people, well, in one situation, that actually participated. And, and that's, what ideas do you have where we could help get more people to find out what's really needed rather than just serve 12 people?
So are you talking about the survey we did this summer?
No, I was looking at the Yahaats thing and just, and just in general, it's, it's
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah. Well, you know, Yahaats, actually, we did a community survey, and I think we got like 250 responses, which is a really big portion of their population. So we actually did have a pretty extensive response in that way. So we can certainly also host, I didn't put it in the work plan, but it would certainly fit a, you know, community engagement activities where people could come and share their thoughts about what they'd like to see at the library. In Yahaats, we did it in a socially-distanced way. They had this kind of out, covered outdoor space. And, you know, it was actually pouring down rain, and it was like this monsoon off the coast, and people are huddled. They wanted to talk about the library, you know, so. And my experience, you know, it varies how many people want to come and participate in that kind of situation. So if you have a survey that can quickly gather information, that's useful as well. So you can put things on social media, you know, ask a question, and then see if people answer it. I, I don't, I want to learn more about how people get information in Lowell. But a lot of communities I work in, there isn't a local paper, you know, so Facebook is, you know, often Facebook and, and sometimes Instagram are it, you know. So how, how can we mobilize, you know, existing ways people gather information or keep up with what's going on in the community and, and gather that? But, you know, what I, what I have seen in COVID is often a higher amount of participation than we had before, because people are more isolated, I think, and they're often, you know, welcome the opportunity to do something of benefit to the community and, and think about something that's going to enhance it.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We have one part-time person, like you said, we're going to be hiring. Rest of them are volunteers, and all we've ever used is volunteers in the past. Board Foundation expects us to have some procedural manner, manuals, policies for the people that we bring in to as volunteer staff. Can you provide, or we'd kind of like to provide policy and some procedural manuals, manuals associated with the daily operations, something that we can take to the Board Foundation to support their requests?
Yes, I can help with that. I can help with policies and practices and, yes.
I just didn't say it in there. So I was hoping the answer would be yes.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Anything else? We have a motion. Page 34.
I make a motion to approve the library consulting services proposal with Penny Hummel consulting in the amount, or, yeah, consulting in the amount not to exceed $14,970 and to authorize the city administrators.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by John, seconded by Gail. We have further discussion. Thoughts?
It's, it's important to me that the budget was already included. Otherwise, I think we
Yeah, and for the benefit of the, of the public, I'd like to make a brief statement that we budgeted for a part-time librarian who was supposed to start in November of this year. The salary is already budgeted. We don't plan on completing the project and, and turn hiring somebody till end of next summer. So we're reprogramming the salary, or what I'm proposing is to reprogram the salary, cover the cost of the consulting engagement.
To be comparable.
Right.
Any other question? All those in favor of motion to approve the library consulting services proposal with Penny Hummel consulting in the amount not to exceed $14,970 and to authorize the city administrator to sign, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you and let's build a library.
Let's do it. Thank you, Penny. I'll be in touch.
Thank you so much. Have a great meeting, you guys. Bye-bye.
Okay, next item, a motion to approve the boundary and partition survey proposal with Okay, next item, a motion to approve the boundary and partition survey proposal with SNF Land Services in the amount of twenty-six thousand twenty-five dollars to authorize the city administrator to sign. Mr. Conley, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Has a plan to finance the library city hall renovation project by selling vacant real property. To accomplish that, I have a boundary and partition survey proposal so that we can start partitioning up this property to prepare it for sale. I solicited competitive quotations. What I have on here for recommended approval was the one with the lowest cost. The surveyor says that he can complete the boundary surveys in seven weeks' time. After that, we'll need approval by the planning commission. And then after that, we will file the partition plaque with the county and we officially have a separate properties that we can sell. You'll also see on the exhibit A with Rolling Rock Park, since they're going to be out there working, I asked them to record the right of way where Cannon Street is proposed to come through at some point in the future. And city hall property, we have a discussion later on about if we include the parking lot or if we don't include the parking lot. If a decision is made to reserve the parking lot, then I'll ask the surveyor to amend the proposal accordingly. What questions do you have for me?
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the boundary and partition surveys proposal with SNF Land Services in the amount of twenty-six thousand twenty-five dollars to authorize the city administrator to sign.
Second.
By Tim and John, okay, do we have further follow-up questions? Discussion?
I only got one.
Okay, go ahead.
What's to do with parking lot?
We have an agenda item later on to discuss if the council wants to include the parking lot in the petition to sell or reserve for Paul Fisher Park. At City Hall.
Oh, okay, that's what I was.
I'm looking at.
I'm looking here.
Okay. Okay.
Jeremy, I noticed in the motion, the budget impacts and cost estimates messing up, that in the motion, we're not including the twenty-five hundred dollars in the community services.
Correct.
I'll. That that would be covered under our general services contract with Civil West.
Doesn't need this bid, free bid.
Other questions? Do you have a motion?
We have to vote.
Would you have a motion, okay, we're already there? Okay, but in that case, all those in favor to approve a boundary and partition survey proposal with SNF Land Services in the amount of twenty-six thousand twenty-five dollars to authorize the city administrator to sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Next up on page fifty is the motion to approve a community grant program application with the Pine Needlers. Mr. Conley.
Thank you, the Pine Needlers have submitted a a grant application, they said their last quilt show was such a success, they need more equipment for next year. Request is one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, if approved, we would have a thousand dollars left over in the community grant application account, which is what we typically spend for the schools for the grant application they turn into us. We budget three thousand a year. The quilters have already received one. One funding request from us and we have a thousand left over.
Questions? Motion? Okay, you have a second?
A second.
We have Maureen and Tim. Okay, further discussion. Okay, all those in favor of motion to approve community grant program application with the Pine Needler Group in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? I think what happened is the facilities have gotten larger and larger that they go into and they can put more cool stuff. When it was at the range, it was that big, then they went to Lundie, that big, now they've got the gymnasium that big. We build another building, it's going to cost us.
They bring in more than they ask for.
They do good work, I like them so much. Next up is. Page fifty-three, motions to authorize the city administrator to execute a contract to clean up the debris, Mr. Conley.
I'm asking for city council to authorize me to spend up to ten thousand dollars to remove the debris and the cleanup for the live burn training. For the house at two oh five East Main Street, the house is scheduled to be burned this Saturday. We've already received two quotes, received one quote last week for ninety-five hundred, they could get started next week. Received another quote this morning for. Was it fifty-three hundred max? Fifty-eight hundred? We're trying to get one more quote and I'll select whoever is or can do it for a reasonable cost and a reasonable timeframe. And I'll also add that we, next week, we have the person doing the phase one environmental study coming out there, so I'd like to get this cleaned up before they come out there.
How much did it cost to clean up the other main street property?
About six thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, so we hired a contractor for fifty-five hundred, we got about thirty-eight hundred staffs clients where they're going to throw them up off that factory.
Is the end of, are any of the individuals bidding for this job and those individuals that were involved in that?
No, not, not that. We did reach out to them because they they have a good relationship with them and they're out of town on a job that they must be having.
Sounds good, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a contract not to exceed ten thousand dollars for debris removal and cleanup related to the live burn training at two oh five East Main Street.
Okay, we have a motion by Gail, seconded by John, further discussion, questions? All those in favor of motion to authorize city administrator execute a contract not to save ten thousand dollars for debris removal and cleanup related to the live burn training on two oh five East Main Street, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Next up on fifty-four, next page is motion to approve resolution seven seventy-one. Lowell Development Code for Flooding, Mr. Conley, stick to this.
The city is in the midst of a review from the state on our participation in the National Flood Insurance, National Flood Plane Insurance Program. As part of that, they want us to update our flood plane development ordinance by harmonizing it with the Oregon Model Flood Plane Code. According to our development code, the only people who can initiate these updates are city council, planning commission, or private individual can request it. So this resolution would formal, go on the record for city council as kickstarting this process and directing staff to update the code. The next step would be to hold public hearings, planning commission approval, public hearing with city council, then for your approval. We're trying to get this done by the end of the year. And it is a requirement, if we want to stay in the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, this is something we have to do.
How much is it? What's the cost?
Just just the staff time for the L clock planners.
Okay. We have a motion, or questions?
Yeah, well, I I wanted to clarify because I didn't know what the purpose of this was. I live on the lake and I'm full confession, it's a selfish request. Generally, you know, I looked at code, the Lowell Revised Code, and I saw that, you know, this section is about limiting and directing growth and hardly ever when you have a plan amendment is it to facilitate development, it's usually more restrictions and and frankly, that property is supposed to take care of me, so I'm not a burden on you in my old age, so. So I was a little concerned about what the point was. What I, you gave me some information and then I looked into it and it's also for the city to access flood damage, really, you had said indicated there were like two or three personal property owners and it's like, I didn't see the risk of revising the whole code to give two people the ability to get flood insurance, so. Even though I'm, you know, selfishly asking, but you know, I mean, sometimes when you ask for, you you adopt these, what seems to be these just innocuous updates turns into be a nightmare. And and one of the things we have is this lake and we don't want to prevent, say, you know, maybe some development happening at the marina because it's in a flood plain. And so I think it's still going to be important when they present these updates that we pay attention to it.
Sure.
But sometimes when these ships, trains start rolling, it's too hard to stop them, and so that's why I'd ask you, again, if it's selfish in its initiation, but I still think it's something we need to watch out for, that most cities aren't in the position that we are in and and we just need to make sure it's tailored for us and not just kind of a cookie cutter thing that that gives us things that we don't really want to live with, so. I'm I'm in favor of going forward with this.
Comfortable with it?
I would assume the city has more to lose in case of flooding on this thing, yeah. With the water treatment plants, specifically.
You know, I am, I am not familiar with FEMA and how they do this stuff, never been through a disaster like that. I mean, the flood of sixty-four when I was a kid, but that's.
Well, we'll be coming after you, Tim.
Yeah. We're on a little higher ground.
Oh, I see.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Move approval of resolution seven seventy-one.
Okay. Okay, Maureen made it, John seconded by a second. Okay, all those in favor of resolution seven seventy-one or resolutions initiated text amendment to the Lowell Development Code to incorporate the Oregon State Model Flood Plane Code, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? The last item on there. Before we adjourn, usually we have any public comments, anybody? Not seeing any, we're going to go into another session. Okay, in that case, no council comments, anything at this point? Okay, in that case, we're adjourned at seven forty-eight. We need to take a few minutes or ready to go? Okay, ready to go. Okay, call to order the joint meeting of the city council, parks and parks and recreation committee at seven forty-eight, roll call, please.
Before I do the roll call, Mr. Mayor, would we like to invite the parks members to join us?
At the table? Sure, if they want to bring it up or they sit where they are, I have no, whichever way they're more comfortable.
Come on, Hall.
You have to bring a chair, though.
I think we got all our shiny faces.
I'll go ahead and call the roll.
Okay.
Mayor Bennett, Councilor Harris, Councilor Stratus, Councilor Myers, Councilor Weathers, Parks and Recreation Committee Chair O'Regan, committee member Wild, committee member Brazil, and committee member Mauricio is absent.
Okay. First item on here, do we even discuss the parking lot anymore since we made that motion in the regular session or? Is there need for other?
Yeah, it can be. Yeah, yeah, so we have to figure out whether we're going to sell the parking lot, tell them where to survey.
Right.
Okay, first up, a decision on city hall parking lot, relationships, plan to sell, Mr. Conley?
So we, council just approved the boundary partition survey and I'm asking for direction on if we include the parking lot at the current city hall in the partition to be sold or if we carve that out and reserve it to Paul Fisher Parking, and in your packet of included pictures. Option one, what the yellow line shows the the part partition, the current city hall and sell the parking lot. Option number two, you see the yellow line excludes the parking lot. I've also included some pros and cons of both options and some additional things to keep in mind. My recommendation is to include the parking lot in the partition to be sold. If city council votes to reserve the parking lot, then I'll go back to the surveyor, tell them that we're going to be changing this scope of work and to prepare the survey accordingly. If council decides to keep the parking lot to sell, I have a recommended motion, I don't think that's necessary since you already approved the survey proposal as is. But if you choose to reserve it, I would like a vote on that.
Questions for the parks or the council?
Well, I think it really should be kept as part of the park to partner, I really do. There's so much activity that goes on on the park, and if we sell it, we may have be sorry for it, but there won't be places for people to park, because as we get more people in town, we're giving up all the properties that we should keep back for such as a stop of the parking. I think the parking lot should say, that that's my feeling as a member of the park.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I also agree with George saying, and also Tim made a statement several meetings back about better. Be careful on decisions that you make today that are going to affect this town twenty, thirty years down the road. We need to keep that in mind. As the city grows, there's going to be more and more kids in the park, et cetera, et cetera, and yet you want to give up more footprint when it comes to the parks, and that, I'm totally opposed to that, you've given up too many pieces of property as it is already. When it comes to expansion for governmental offices or whatever, twenty, thirty years down the road, you don't have any more properties left. And and it's really upsetting to me, the direction that this council is going with this town. And so I'm opposed to giving up any more, any more areas from Paul Fisher Park. That's all I got to say because I got to watch my car.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say something and just generally, yeah, I would agree with George and Paul. Just because they're, they're, it might be in part. There's not. At this point, and it might change over time. at, at this point, and it might change over time, the, the a lot of parking, and there are a lot of families and kids that play in parks in the summers and um, so I think maintaining the, the park, the existing parking would be beneficial, um, and, um, and to their point, it's, um, most likely prices will rise and we're difficult to find spots, so those parking areas could be very prime real estate at the time, so, um, it might, it'd be more difficult to get it back, I guess, so, thinking twenty, thirty years down the road.
Yeah, I got a question for Hall, you, you watch the park a lot more than some of the last few. Um, how often do you feel that the, um, and, and I realize that part of the station will probably expand as we go through the end of the the future planning for it, but at the current time, how often do you see, um, the parking areas on the street invasion to a full and then it overflowing into the current city hall parking lot?
Right now, it's not that. Right now, there's still, uh, I'd say at the most when I'm sitting out there, uh, maybe half a dozen cars might show up before they wanna go into the, uh, city parking lot. But then you have your birthday parties on the weekends and this and that, more cars show up and, uh, I think that's like that safe place, so, um, there's plenty of parking right now on the street. But I just, it makes no sense to me to give up more footprint when this town is gonna grow. It, it, it's, it's, it's stupid.
Other comments?
How many cars can actually fit in that parking lot?
Four.
Five, maybe?
No, maybe more than that.
Now.
Can do at least.
No, there's not. Because I know when he parks there, Joey, he parked there and everyone, I would have to park behind one of them when they pull up to city hall. So, it's not gonna hold more than four, the way it is now.
The master plan, I found it like, it's like seven or eight.
Yeah.
Because it changes after the building's up there.
But the building, regardless of the buildings there or not, that parking lot's not gonna grow.
Yeah.
So, that's not gonna change.
Okay, I haven't given this a lot of thought, but Jeremy, how big, uh, piece of property is that?
The parking lot?
The, the whole thing?
Six thousand square feet.
Oh, what, just the city hall campus?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're. Everything.
Yeah. I, I guess, so this is all the way it's, it, without the parking lot, that is all the city hall property, right? Yeah. All this?
That's correct.
Well, if we're so worried about future parking, would it be worth, uh, breaking this up differently? And going straight, at least keeping that whole, like that whole rectangle up to?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
So, just expand the parking lot for the park and then sell the rest of it.
Well, I, I'd rather use, not just parking.
Oh, we don't?
We do not, you don't own the backside of city hall.
We do not own that backside.
No, just the northeast corner. Is what, you do own the backside of city hall.
No. We do not. You can show me that picture.
Towards the fire station.
Fire station.
Towards the fire station.
Yeah, I'm pulling up.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
Uh, we own all of this.
All of which, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, see that square that's not there? We don't own this square.
But we own to the north of city hall.
Yes.
Yeah, we were kinda parching there, a little bit.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so we would be, so what, what would that do? So there would be a lot there, is there any access to it?
No, not now, but that, the thing, that's the thing that looks at it, to try to sell those lots.
You can't do it.
Whenever you're gonna have to kinda keyhole to drive down in there, I know they've got one over on fourth that's like that. But, uh, at one time, I think it was designed, there was thoughts about selling the whole thing, and you'd have, uh, condos facing east and west would drive down the middle. That way, the, some of them would be facing out onto the park and some would be facing backwards. But if you take the, the parking lot out of it, I, I tell you what, I tell you what I foresee out of that, if you put the apartments, condos or whatever there, that's where they're gonna park their trailers, their RVs, their, their boats and everything else in that whole parking lot. And I don't wanna see the city get into the, uh, you know, you gotta get out of here business, so, I, I think that, uh, either we put a parking lot all the way across it to all the way, the thing is, there's parking on both sides of the street on, uh, uh, third or whatever, going all the way from Moss all the way up to Pioneer, so. You know, I, I.
Parking on one side of the street.
Just one side, okay? I see a car there, so that was what was the giveaway, the, uh, but, uh, you know, we're gonna paint, I don't, I, I just, uh, it's gonna make it harder to sell that property back in there.
It, it, it would be weird, I agree. But if, I mean, if we have this, we can make access. Right? I mean, it would be an odd shape, so it would just, it would be the same shape, it would just have a chunk off of it.
How desirable is that to a, uh, building? It looks like two lots now, or before it was a whole lot more.
If you're talking about condos, I mean, think about how those are done with driveways and stuff.
To Hall's point, it's about giving up, we're not talking about it being a parking lot, it's land.
Okay.
It's land, doesn't have to be a parking lot, it can be anything you want it to be, anything the city wants it to be. There's a subdivision that's going in across from Two Mac that's got a bunch of family housing coming in, I think demand is gonna increase, doesn't have to be a parking lot. The we're all in the master plans, the Paul Fisher master plan con place city hall staying there.
Right.
And all this stuff being improved, not sold off, but we need to do that because we're buying other stuff to do. So, one idea is, yeah, to just take it straight off the east side of the parking lot, straight to the fire department to use that as parkland. One of the, um, suggestions or considerations that, um, Jeremy put in the report was it would be a whole lot under additional considerations about who owns the corner lot there. And so, I know him, so I asked him, what are you gonna do with that? He moved out of the area, what are you gonna do with that? Would you be willing to sell at the same time the city sells theirs? He said, sure. Absolutely. He didn't buy it for any particular reason, he was trying to help the city at the time, Rick Garland owns it. And so, that takes all that stuff away, then you got this nice, big, huge chunk of property that somebody would buy. It's an option, just an option.
Well, and even though it's different, the developer could buy both bars.
Just the city hall.
Yeah, and do something, you know, in the way of multiple, multiple home.
Well, what she's saying, I don't understand.
You know, most developers don't wanna work on two separate things, so we would have to buy that property from them and include each one, just like we did the other.
I don't think so with this particular one, it, it could be.
They have nothing to use the homeowner, it has to do with the developer.
I understand.
They don't want to buy from three different people.
I understand, but most likely buyers, there'd be someone local that, um, doesn't have that issue, so.
Okay, no, that's not true.
Well, you're obviously not gonna stick to the master plan.
Well, because it's already.
Well, no, because it's set, it's like six hundred thousand dollars and oh, yes, you're right, we're not gonna stick to the master plan.
Right, and I already, I sit there every day, I already got the whole park redesigned.
Yeah.
But nobody wants to listen to me.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, that's what your committee's doing.
Yeah, that's it.
And we, we discussed it about renovating the lawns and this and that, making improvements, I tried to get city, the councilors over there to walk through the park to see what minor repairs can be made without busting the budget, but that kind of fell through. And it's just with the development up on top of Moss Street and other developments going on, you know, in twenty, thirty years, you're gonna have more kids using that park, more parents using the park, more, more, more. And that's what you need to think about. And, and yet, people are talking about giving up more footprint, letting go of the park, and, and it's, it, it just sounds so ridiculous.
I mean, but all, this park is not their only option. That, that's what I have.
Another park right down there.
Well, not, not only that, so, I, I value parks, I really do, green space.
Yeah.
Um, but basically, you know, we're not an, an inner city. We have a large amount of rural areas surrounding us, we've got North Shore Park, we've got Windbury Park, we've got Meridian Park, we've got Orchard Park, we've got the Railroad Park, we've got Rolling Rock Park, we've got Paul Fisher Park.
A lot of.
We have Dexter Park with, with the Frisbee Golf Course, we have Gaster Park, we have the boat launches. We're not lacking park space or air or green space in our community. And I do think that, that we will grow, but I have a great concern that, that we're reserving more park space than we will need for the next hundred and fifty years. That, that, um, we have more, we have more square footage of park space per capita than probably most cities in Oregon. And so, and on the master plan, I think it's a great idea, I hope this comes to fruition to some extent. But I don't see any reason why the section, the two gazebo's or whatever these are over here couldn't be put in this open space here and accomplish much of the same service that we're attempting to offer with this master plan. I don't know, you know, I, I see value in keeping the park alive. But I think this can be modified and still form a very efficient, nice park at Paul Fisher that's pretty large. And as we expand Rolling Rock, some of the pressure that's on Paul Fisher is going to head to Rolling Rock if, if we reach fruition on that one, so. We've had to kind of balance that, but this isn't the only park space in the game. And that people will tend to balance load out as time goes on.
Would you agree that Paul Fisher is a family oriented park?
Absolutely.
And Rolling Rock is not?
At this point.
At this point, it's not.
I think, I think with the master plan that we, or the vision that has been proposed for Rolling Rock, I think it will change a little bit of its flavor from what we're seeing at the current time, I, I a hundred percent agree with you, this is a park for moms, take your children, mom and dad pick your children where parties occur, Rolling Rock doesn't quite have that flavor yet, but I think we'll see it become more of that type of an atmosphere as we develop it.
I look at Rolling Rock as like an interpretive park.
At the, at current, at the current time, and that was the intent for it when it was developed. You know, it's kind of the railroad logging kind of interpretive part, you know, kind of our history here. But with the, with, with where we're going, I think in the long run with Rolling Rock, it's gonna weasel over to that flavor and give a little bit of flavor of just a park for families to be at.
It's on a really busy street that doesn't have a fence playing boy.
Well, I, you know.
This one does with the street.
I, but I think the majority of the park at Rolling Rock, Maureen, is on the other side of Moss and Main, not on North Shore. So, I think, I think the intent of, of Paul, of, of Rolling Rock is that side where the amphitheaters aimed towards the Blackberry and things like that, but I think the playground, I think if I remember right, the drawings.
It's okay, it's all rock bank side.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It was made for young children of the park, it's gonna be.
So I, I don't, I don't, you know, Moss Street is really busy too, Maureen, a lot of trucks fall back down.
Right, that's why this one has a fence here, like it's critical.
Well, it doesn't mean that we couldn't implement something, I, I just, you know, I think get a lot of open space here that I, I don't see some of this space being utilized even by the families, I think trying to compartmentalize and use our space efficiently, we don't need vast, giant open spaces, I think we have that in our surroundings, in our natural environment. So, um, that's aside from this parking lot issue, I'm just saying that the, the overall vision of that last little leg that's to the north of city hall, I, I really don't see a lot of people using that place, even at, at the current time, and I don't think putting a gazebo over there is gonna make a big difference, I think most of the focus is together in the Paul Fisher Park, and we'll stay that way. And you guys find balance.
And going back to the reason we're selling these properties, is that we're looking at considerable sized loans for this property and for that park over there. And so, if we start saying we're not gonna sell this, not gonna sell that, then it's gonna possibly impact on the fees that people pay on their utility bills over time, so it, it's gonna be, do we keep the land and not have the money to do anything with it? Do we sell the land and use it to make sure these are developed, that it's, uh, uh, like I say, either way, if, uh, whatever way, you know, the, the fees are gonna come in and gonna be required, uh, so.
It's a balance.
It's gonna be, you know.
It's a balance, it's just returning balance.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, so the, like the, um, um, the sale of the land, and you probably haven't asked me what that would be. Uh, is there any, is it mostly proportioned to the purchase of, like this property and we, and we develop, or, or in the remodel of this building, or is it purpose toward other things, or is there, has it, that, has that been decided? Is it, because I know that Paul Fisher Park does need require some improvements, um, would some of that be allocated to if it's all like the, the whole thing, like the whole parking lot building, et cetera, so that be provisioned to, uh, improving, uh, or like Tim was saying about, you know, the, the, uh, they're, um, like, sort of re-realizing it, making it more efficient, um, is there any, any of that money go to that type of thing, or is that the incentive?
No, I thought we based our decision on the library, on these properties that we have so that we didn't have to charge the community for any of the library renovation. That's basically why we're doing it, it was better raise everybody's rates. And then we have some park decisions to make in terms of, uh, it's Rolling Rock. You know, and that could raise, that could be something we have to charge people for, so, you know, we're trying not to burden the community with more fees. And so, we chose to finance the library with the properties.
And we're not trying to short the city on parkland, because we bought three properties over there on Main Street for, I don't know, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars to expand Rolling Rock Park, so they make it more useful and, uh, uh, easy, uh, for people to get into and out of, and we want to sell the end of it, we're, uh, possibly put a strip mall or whatever. But, uh, we tried to square it up so it'd be more uniform and like that, but so, so we're not skipping on, we're, we haven't even paid those loans off yet, we're not skipping on buying, uh, you know, getting city property, park property, we, we, we're, we're sensitive to having a nice park.
Was any, I'm kind of aggressive a bit, but you mentioned some about the fees for everybody to pay. Was any thought and discussion done at the onset of this big project to, uh, create a library district, library and the fire district, because we don't charge people for the library, but yet we have so many people from underlying areas that come and use the library, that four hundred plus residents of law were paying for. I mean, the fire district works pretty well right now, couldn't we have a library district that would help?
The thing is.
As we develop it though, we, I mean, we have had a couple of discussions that, you know, that is something we will consider, is that people outside of the city would, you know, like, if we go to Springfield, we have to pay for our library card. Something like that, but yeah.
Would that need to go on a ballot for the people of, uh, those districts that's within the library district to be voted into, for them to buy into it?
If, if you were to create a special district, you, first of all, and I'm, I'm not an expert on special districts, but there'd have to be a petition process, I believe it's fifteen percent within the proposed district area. And then there would have to be a, a vote of the people to create that district.
Well, and at this point, there's, for the library, there's no fee to the community, that's, that's what I was saying, is we're, we, we chose to finance.
Well, I, I understand that, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty hefty finance, and maybe ten years down the road, we have another thing that comes up that requires us to play more money again. And the outminding area are getting all this great service for free. And the outminding area are getting all this great service for free. You know, I, I mean, we don't charge when the fire department goes out to Fall Creek. Because they're, they're in the fire district, you know, there's gotta, there's gotta be a way of.
Would, would you make the same evaluation for our parks though?
Well, I, I would actually, but I don't think you can do that, but the library is more tangible. You can see that.
But there are park statistics.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Well, and that's something we could think about, it doesn't necessarily have to be done immediately.
I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there for revenue, you know, because I don't want to keep being taxed to death for extra fees.
That's why we made the decision we did.
But it's still a tough one, you know, on top of may come in six years, for instance, you know.
Anyway, we're not, we're gonna have to decide on this piece of property. No, no, I get it, it, we always, yeah, lots, lots of things to think about. So.
Do we wanna make a recommendation on this?
Now, what's our goal? Are we deciding?
I'm trying to decide about this partition line.
Yeah, no, I know that, but.
If there is a survey coming out. Or do you have it set up yet?
I don't have it set up yet.
How, how does the parks committee feel about the balance aspect of this? About, let's say, we, you know, we say that we see the validity in keeping the parking area. But we also need to make some adjustments. And to me, that would be the property that the City Hall is on and to the north of it. So that we can continue with funding the library project without burdening the citizens of the wall with extra additional utilities.
Explain that again, Tim, I'm sorry.
So, in turn, in terms of, of both Gail and I have both said something about balance here. You know, all three park committee members that are present tonight said that they would not be in favor of selling the parking lot. Do you guys see the validity in terms of trying to maintain some balance out of this? That if we, if we chose to keep the parking lot for part of Paul Fisher Park. That you can see the value to us in, in, um, in selling the rest of the City Hall property to help fund this project.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
I, I just don't see how you're gonna get access to that back piece. You're not gonna drive through the parking lot. No, there's no access.
Look at the, look at where the black line is, so not what Jeremy has set up. But.
I see the black one.
So, that stays part of Paul Fisher Park, behind the parking lot.
Can you line it up on there?
Yeah.
You mind running over there?
Still don't have the access to that little piece.
So you wouldn't, the, the access wouldn't come out of the parking lot, it runs parallel to the parking lot?
Yeah, on the other side. They're just straight line on the right hand side of the parking lot, if you're looking at the City Hall, all the way to the fire hall.
Like I say.
You're cutting that piece of property in half. And then, y- yes it is.
Have you seen the development on the corner?
Have, have you seen the houses on Fourth Street, how they've done all those? They work around this, I mean, developers work around it all the time, with long lots and driveways and stuff like this. This is not anything out of the ordinary for development.
Especially when it was multiple family homes.
We don't own that other piece of property.
That needs to be determined.
So that, that little piece there means nothing to us unless we have that other piece of property.
I understand, but you can put, I think that a forward thinking.
Can you see that George?
Issue is that that makes for a very, that makes for a very attractive residential. Piece of property next to a park for development. And that's okay.
Now, when you look at that.
You have no access to it.
There's a space between City Hall and the fire department where you drew that in there and other people's parks. Is that more than five thousand square feet?
Yeah.
No.
But you do have access to it, John. If the, if the line is drawn right there, you have access on.
No, you don't, you gotta make, go ahead, just put a road in there, that's what you need. And you're taking out.
For multi-family is different.
We don't have no road back there for multi-family.
John, John's saying we don't own this.
That's. You don't own that other piece, so do not.
I understand that, I understand that, I get that. One, two, three, four, five, there's. There's, uh, the city owned property in that particular.
But you're not doing all that, Jeremy, cut that down, where you're gonna have a driveway or a road or whatever. It's five thousand square feet.
So everything now.
Minus the road and everything you need to put in.
Everything in the blue is five thousand square feet, is that what you wanna see?
Yep.
But it's less.
The driveway, uh, would that count as, uh?
A bill.
The lot?
No.
So that's about five thousand.
So, you have to be at least seven thousand or whatever, because that's an unsellable lot.
That is an unsellable lot.
If it's separate, but it's not separate.
No, it's unsellable because it's not big enough.
Say that again. Which ones?
The gray ones, to the left, to the south.
Where I built the two duplexes.
Yeah, well, don't you own one of the other ones down there?
Yeah, I don't understand where you're having a problem getting to that lot, those. A bulldozer and, uh.
I know that, but you're taking, you're taking more of that five thousand square foot out of it. Plus, you're digging into the rest of the city lot that they wanna sell. So our lots get smaller, his lot gets smaller. It's not there to do. And five thousand square feet isn't making up a lot.
In Springfield, I think that.
This isn't Springfield.
I understand it.
So good.
But I sold some lots up on Fourth Street that were five thousand square feet.
That's good.
If you wanna sell the property, you have the ability to make, uh, uh, an exception to sell a five thousand foot lot.
But it's not five thousand foot.
I don't know, how big is it?
Uh, it's less than that, you're putting driveway through it.
Well, isn't that there?
The driveway through the city owned lots.
I, I, I should have been in there on the beginning of the argument, but.
So the lot would have.
The debate, the debate.
That lot would have, have to come all the way out to the street.
It would have come all the way out to the street and over.
Yep.
It'd have to come all the way out to Third Street.
What, and we need, we need to see, you'll see, the minimum lot width is sixty feet. So we need to see. There to there. That's really pushing it. And then you gotta factor in. What the setbacks are gonna be. And then you gotta factor in, there's a maximum. Of building coverage, so, so the, the building footprint can't be above a certain amount.
But. If you have a lawn. If you, if you did a driveway here, that lot could be used. I guess it would have to be some way to manage that.
I'm either in favor of going on the left side of the parking lot all the way to the fire hall, or on the right side of the parking lot all the way to the fire hall. Those are my two options, I can live with either one. I just wanted to bring it up because when you start selling off. Little pieces, you're never gonna, you're never gonna have a chance to buy property back. You said you don't think we need more parks? That, that's fine, you know, um, I just saw that big subdivision going in. And this is kind of the little kids' park that's more family oriented, that we're trying to attract here. Because it helps keeps our city healthy and our schools healthy. Um, I, I just wanted it, I wanted the council to consider it, that's all.
I agree.
See, one option originally, then we started this whole thing three or four years ago, was to put half court basketball. Half court at the back there, in the back, you know, half court.
So even if we kept that whole piece back there, how, how was it gonna have access? Or we, or you're saying we shouldn't let go, or we should sell the parking lot, and that way it's all.
It's all one big gift piece, let them, the developers take care of it. We don't need that headache.
Well, anybody that buys it would take care of it, but you'd rather them break it up. We're not gonna have a headache with it either way. Unless we can't sell it.
And if I were the developer, I'd buy the front lots and I'll buy that back home, because there's no access. And then the city stuff.
Somebody's gonna buy that, John, somebody.
How, how they gonna get back there, Gail? I buy the front.
Rick's gonna sell his property and there's access.
You don't have a clue about that, other than him, other than hearsay. Let's see in paper or writing, but that's gonna happen.
Well, you're, you can't say it's not gonna happen, so I guess we're even.
It's just hearsay.
So how big, how big is the?
Is what I'm saying.
Without that back piece, the part that City Hall is just that little rectangle, not little.
Did you show me on, on my computer?
The part we don't own?
I go on the schedule.
This section right here.
Just this square right here.
I'm not saying we, I just, I just. Don't work out one way or the other. I was just curious.
So, let, let me.
The other question is.
So, almost two lots.
So.
Go on, Gail, go on that.
So we don't own this.
Right.
We own this. If we break this off like this, you've got this back piece.
No, that's good, Gail, because we can see it back here.
Go ahead.
So it's this, what John thinks is that we, if we will be able to sell this, because we can't get access to it. We're saying you could do a driveway.
So if we can't sell that, couldn't we just give it back to Paul Fisher Park?
Yeah, we could do that.
If it doesn't end up being a viable option, couldn't we just go, okay, it didn't sell, we made an attempt, nobody's really interested in it? Let's finish up that corner of the park.
Both the hardcore basketball in the beginning.
How much?
That's, that's what I think.
You know the price of the half court basketball park? Fifty thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, but that's.
But still. That's twenty, thirty years.
Like he said, if it doesn't sell, then we can always put it back in the park.
John, did you hear any of that?
No, 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 no.
John.
What if someone buys the front and they can't get it back?
Finish the bill.
When you're, when you're, when you're taking into consideration building of a lot. It is, how easy is it to do it? And if you have two houses side by side on this street, is a lot easier than, uh, than it looks. And so, the price will go up for your lot. And I don't, you, you can do it two ways, you can still put two houses on there. You can, uh, save the parking lot, and you can also save the back space for the park. And so, sell those two lots together as two houses to be built. In fact, I might even be worse than that myself.
See, that's what, there you go. See, Bill, we don't own that corner, that northeast corner, somebody else.
Sorry, you know that.
We don't own the northeast corner, right?
No, no.
See, he's interested.
John, what we were saying was, if it doesn't sell, can't we just keep it for the park?
Fine, I, I really don't care, the whole point was to fund this thing here. So you're gonna go and, and your whole, you guys, this whole thing was, we don't want to have the, uh, citizens of law have to pay for the. For the City Hall slash library, okay, so, you're not gonna get the money to do that with.
No, we make an attempt to get the money. But if it ends up being, no developers really interested, even though I disagree, I think some developers will be interested. Whether, where there's property, and somebody will try to fill it in, there'll be a fill. But if it doesn't, we donate, we let it go with the park master plan and let it go with where it was.
So, so Gail, to your question, uh, what the analysis I provided you in September. We were assuming we would have sold the entire City Hall property as, I have an option one. So, for a gross es- estimated sale price of one hundred sixty-four thousand. This would cut that in about half. So instead of getting one sixty-four, we get about eighty, eighty thousand.
So that, that's where we go back to the residents for the difference.
I don't think there'd be a difference, because I think it panned out for where they were already had to pay for, by the time this will be. The other two, not Rolling Rock Park. With the Highlands and the. Right.
Well, and again, we're saying that, you know, we're, we're acting like that might not, that isn't selling, and it could sell. So there could be some more into, in that price if that back piece sold.
It kind of blocks out that other, that ever be sold then, as I see it.
What?
It kind of blocks out the backside to ever be sold then.
I think it'll be sold.
No, I mean, no, too fraught, but, uh, if we keep the parking lot, there's no access into the, that's just gonna be, that's gonna be parked. That's fine.
Yeah.
We'll see, I guess we'll just see best, and whether it'll work out.
So we look to sell that thing, which is actually two lots.
Jeremy, what would be the, we're trying to decide on the partition law, what would be the extra cost to do the one? Um, line as proposed versus the line to carve that out, to do the survey, because that's the issue.
I don't think it would be that much of a difference in the cost.
Yeah, the cost is gonna be issue, where we're gonna have them.
That's what I'm saying.
Cost has nothing to do with it. What it has, no, no.
That's in the cost of the survey.
Yeah, the cost of the survey is gonna be very minimal.
Well, that's what I'm saying, then why not do it? So we have options, then, because it can't be sold without a survey. That's my point.
So what you want is two surveys?
Might be a wise thing to do, then we, we have options if it. If it doesn't sell.
The, the difference in cost would be minimal, I think, if, if any. I, and I don't, I don't know for sure until I talk to them, but I don't think it would be that, that much of a cost difference. They're gonna be out there mobilized, working in there.
Do we have to, are we voting on?
Yes, I'd like to have a, a vote, so that there's some clarity on my far, whenever I call up the surveyor tomorrow and ask them to get started. On how we're gonna partition this up.
The, the problem I think is, is I don't think we're down to just two options, but I think we represent a third option, which is a contiguous line. Um, to the, uh, west of City Hall. Um, leaving the parking lot and the property, to the north of the property, parking lot. As part of Paul Fisher Park, so there's not just option one.
Just to the end of the parking lot, we're going all the way back to the fire hall.
It's, can somebody sketch that out?
We already showed it to you, you drew it. There's a lot of strength to the back. I, I think, I think you have a piece of paper that I drew it on.
Here, Jeremy, move this line over here.
He hasn't, okay.
He, he wants.
Yeah.
It's just moving this yellow line, there you go, just like that.
That's how you wanna partition it up?
I think that's how some people perceive it, and at this point in time, there's three options present here.
You, you wanna turn this into more than one lot, or just leave it like this?
Which one?
Oh.
In terms of the L right there?
Yeah.
What would happen? If we did do that? What would happen if you had a big rectangle lot?
A long lot?
You'd have access.
You would.
And you could probably put two. And you could probably put two buildings.
You, you would have access from where?
From the road.
Driving through the parking lot?
No, I think, I think she's meaning off of, um.
Off of Third Street.
Like that?
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
So along the edge of the other property, though, I think. If you're there.
You break it up, sell that strip, couldn't you put? Couple houses on that? Well, look what they do all over the place, they do that all the time.
Hey, just to get things rolling, so we can either up or down it.
Maybe it's less than sixty-five.
That's sixty foot, that's, uh.
Okay, okay.
Gonna have setbacks, driveways, everything else.
Yeah.
You're right.
With them, that probably won't work.
Okay.
Well, there's something else to consider. On his master plan, which I assume is not set in stone. He has the basketball court. At the, uh. End of the playground area. They just got done building two homes. Over the fence line. Now, who's gonna want to hear a basketball all day and happy evening? So I'm proposing then we're gonna have to move the basketball court. Up like near Fire Hall.
Oh, that's something else. Every one of those builders built their residences and everyone that bought them knew they were buying next to a park.
Yeah.
That's, that's like saying, you know, the school should move their playground because people might not like.
I was gonna say that. The playground's right behind my house. L, the school playground is right behind my house, lots of noise. Just great, it just kids having fun.
You get.
And I throw the balls back.
The old man sitting across the street being cranky.
Then we move the basketball court next to the house.
Yes.
There you go, all.
Put the skateboard park right there.
Yeah, that's true, we go to them.
Okay, I propose we do the line straight up.
Straight up.
To the right or left of the parking lot? Where he has it proposed right there?
Where he has it proposed right there.
Did you make a motion?
I don't agree with that.
And who gets to vote on this exactly in this situation? Is it just the city council?
City Council, yes.
So, so what is the protocol, though? We're in a joint session, we, we did the survey, um, motion before, but you said that we were gonna talk about this later and we may modify it. Can we modify it in this session or do we have to wait until we, um, terminate this joint meeting and go back into regular?
This is joint meeting, so we're still in council.
Yeah.
There's no, uh, there's no adjourning.
That's a motion.
Then I'll second it. Just to move things forward or backwards, whatever.
Yeah. Speak, Max.
So I can't see the line really well, but the northeast lot. So why not take the line and have it be exactly where Jeremy has it at the parking lot? But why not tell the surveyor, put it sixty feet off of that other property line? Right, so if you wanted to still have it for lots, with one big lot and another lot, but you did the sixty, you got the minimum width, which is currently in our code. So take it off of that northeast, the one we don't own. Go sixty feet to the east, you know, make whatever that depth is, it's gonna be probably right about where Joyce's park park is, in that rough area. Right, if somebody buys that, they're one gonna put a fence to separate their properties from the park. So they can give a little bit of demo there. And if you restructure that parking lot, there's one idea on the, on the park concept plan. But years ago, I had the county come in to revamp that. One to move ADA where it should be and revamp it. And if you change the parking style in that parking lot, instead of perpendicular parking, the slanted parking, you can gain two parking spots, though, and still have an ADA parking spot.
But you're talking.
Still use the access, um, with your parking lot.
He's trying to lay it out so that back lot is, that, that long lot.
So you're me, you mean to move the line sixty feet to the west?
Just wherever it be from the end of her lot, I can't.
Nipple, nipple, sure.
To see why, I think that's a lot.
So.
I think yours too, that would be.
Sixty feet from this lot, this is right away setback, so go sixty feet from here, you got the legal lot width, right? You've got more than enough depth already. So if you went back, moved this line, you know, these, these lines are perfect because the GIs are the perfect fit. If you took this and just said you want the surveyor to make this lot where it's one, two, three, sixty feet away from that one, which should put it pretty close right here. On this map, except it's not correct.
Oh, okay.
Then you guys can decide, if he puts that line there and proposes all as one, you know, not looking at that. Or you can do, you know, three lots, you can do a post stand, do four lots.
But it would make it big enough.
But it would make this, if, you know, if this, if somebody bought it, developed it, bought it, so there's four gold blocks there. If I do a sixty by hundred, a sixty by hundred, a sixty by hundred, and notch this one perfectly. You have four identical lot holes and the one big one and.
I like that.
Yeah.
And you're gonna lose a little bit here, but if you revamp this, you can, this parking lot can be improved immensely. Because you won't have the parking here, you know, that serves City Hall like you currently are. So you could do a diagonal parking here, diagonal parking here, and you could do the ADA parking here with the rectangle.
Or you could expand the lot to the west.
Or you could.
You got all this, you know, let's say whatever.
It's more than a twenty feet then.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, so how do I, how do we word that?
Sixty feet to the west of the northeast lot.
Okay, I make a motion that we put the line sixty feet to the west. In the northeast. East lot.
Do you have that? Do you have a second?
Second.
So, any discussion? Questions?
We killed it, we killed it.
I was gonna say, how long's it been?
So I take it the motion is to, to draw a line from the fire station to Third Street, sixty feet west. Of the property we don't own. And to conclude all of that in the, uh. Lots to, or acreage to be sold.
Yeah.
Did that sound correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They still don't see how they have access to it.
We'll figure it out.
Well, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, I think we're, okay.
You got it? Roll call vote.
Mayor Bennett?
No.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Stratus?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
No.
Councilor Weathers?
Yep.
Okay, it passed. Next item up is the shade tree program for Paul Fisher Park. Mr. Connolly, you wanna speak to that?
Mayor. In the packet, I have a memo on the. Shade tree proposal that the Parks and Recreation Chair, Hall Reagan, has championed. And then we've discussed since the summer, I'm asking for. Approval of this. Program so that we can. Have it formally adopted and move forward with it. The summary of the program is that the Parks and Recreation Committee take the lead. In implementing it. With assistance from staff and the city council. The program is based on the. Tree plan that Dodi Landscape Architects. Created and which is also included in the proposal, it has. Ten planted trees and one tree that's already been donated. The Parks and Recreation Committee would select exact species to be planted. Staff would solicit competitive quotes. The Parks Committee would take. This to the community, tell them the cost involved per tree, get donations, interested community members within donate to buy a tree. If they buy an entire tree, then they get to put in a memorial, the Parks Committee would have later meetings where they. Say what the memorials need to look like, to have some guidelines for consistency. And. We would rely on the Parks Committee and any. Interested member of city council to publicize that and solicit those donations. Uh, the donations would be on a first come, first served, served basis, and anybody who's interested after that could. Put in for some trees for Roland Rock Park when we get to that. So that's the outline of the program enough, presented here.
Any questions? Are there twelve or thirteen trees?
Eleven.
Eleven? I think I saw it before, but I don't remember.
Eleven, yes.
Okay. Any questions? So no trees are gonna be planted until we get the money, right?
That's correct, the ad, idea is that it's community centered.
You have a motion?
Well, can we discuss it first?
Sure.
Because I, I think, I don't think we have all the information that's, that's needed, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if you look at, yeah, let's back up. The history on this was we had that great big tree that was shade, shading the playground, right? We had to take it out because it was just past it. And from that, it was decided that we would have trees planted in that same area. So the children and the mothers could be in the shade where the kids play, which is what they did with the old tree. And this is where this whole thing started from. Now, if you look at this diagram that came. You'll notice that there are no trees placed anywhere near where the kids play, where the old tree was. And I really think we need to look at that because that's the whole idea of the, this tree situation. Not to circumvent the, um, the area, but to have some trees close by. For shade for the. Kids and the mothers. Uh, it's not a good idea for them to roam down the perimeter where we've got these trees. So that is a big issue. Uh, as we see that, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That's part of it. Um, the other issue being that, uh. According to the master plan, the park, the playground area is to be expanded, I believe, to. Would be to the south. And so you'd have to take that into consideration when planting, uh, the trees.
Well, George, I, I had actually said something in a previous meeting that I personally think that we need to kinda, um, pony up and get a larger tree. That these trees we're putting in now, you know, fifty years from now, they're gonna be shaped very intrigued with any size. I personally think we should, we should try to fund. A large tree, they do large scale trees and bigger projects that cost significantly more money. But they're an established tree, right? You end up with a tree that, you know, is anywhere from twelve inches to thirty inches diameter, depending on how much money you wanna spend. And you end up with a tree that is offering shade in, in a period of five to ten years versus thirty to fifty.
So what do we do in the meantime to shade off of the kids and the mothers?
Um, I, 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 you know, I, I think, uh.
Because that is a big issue.
If you're looking at, if you're looking at shade from a tree, I think that's the best option.
Just to buy a base on it, yeah.
And, and I have no idea if cost estimates, by the throw number after, you're probably looking at five to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make, the whole purpose is to create shade. For the children and the mothers. Now, maybe we need to put canopies, some kind of fancy modern canopy around them there. Uh, rather than a large tree at that point. But the, the, the important thing is to create shade. I mean, uh, my granddaughter was here with her kids during the summer. And they're just about boiled because the kids wanted to play and there was nowhere to go in the shade, so. That was the whole purpose of this. Program.
Yeah.
As it was, so. If, if you feel that's the best way to do it, then we need to come up with some shading. We've gotta do that, just for the kids and the, the people that's out there all the time, there's quite a lot. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I can understand what you're saying, but that's a big.
I'm just saying, if we wanna go with the tree as an option shape, there are other options to create shade.
I mean, I don't know, but maybe we need to do some other option with shades. Uh, and still put trees in as memorials.
Max?
If, George, if I can speak to your tree on the park, so this came up during our walk through, um, chairman. Hall is there, and I meant with the landscape parking, Jeremy's there, so the reason that we, the map you see in front of you. Um, this was to start the shade tree program, there's two reasons that the trees are planted, proposed to be in the current situation. One, was a safety barrier between third and the park, the, the area where the trees are proposed to go now, where a lot of kids play football and stuff. So there's kind of a break there with the traffic. So also, the reason we. Called it far, is the reason we didn't put anything next to the playground, if you look at the map that Jeremy's pointing us pulled up. And you see the park area. Of that, there was talk about expanding the park area to more of a square, so moving the, the curb there down to the south. And what the landscape architect recommended was to not plant any trees in that area because. You get a tree, you get established tree, especially a cross tree, and then you end up moving it during construction, whether it's next year, three, four, five years down the road, and you're gonna really lose the. They like expecting the tree, plus it costs a lot more money to move it at the time of your replanting. So his recommendation was, we had a lot of people reach out, um, after Hall brought this up and, and John put the time into it. Currently, we have six people ready to pay right now for a tree up putting. So this was to try to satisfy the donation slash memorial tree, we're gonna call it. You know, these are over time, they will provide a little bit of shade along the. Road there, but the biggest thing was a safety barrier. Um, and then there was talks about putting possibly a bigger tree like Tim said, you know, closer to the park after the upgrade, which would provide the shade like you were talking about.
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problem with all these trees like this.
But the bigger tree.
It's the share, it's the problem, whether it's a canopy type, they even wanted. You know, what they. Where everything.
Which are great, they have, I just got back from Vegas.
Yeah, you know.
They have them everywhere.
Right, and I think that, that would substitute for a, a tree in that area. If you didn't go down there. Dig it up.
Well, I, I will say this. None of those last as long as a tree.
Well, I understand, but what we're doing in the meantime. We need to take care of these children. We really do. I mean, there's a lot out there during the summer, and there's nowhere for them to be shading, you know? Um, so even if it's only temporary. At least giving them something, we can take it down in winter.
Okay.
On fall, not in. A lot of them on fall.
Yeah, they're all on fall.
George, I, I'm agree with, agree, in agreement with what you're saying.
Yeah.
What you're doing, but that has nothing to do with this. We're talking about trade, the, given the program back to the Parks Department to come up with that. If you also wanna come up with a program for canopies in addition and bring that, but get pricing and all that.
Okay.
And bring it back, if you wanna go out and get a large tree like Tim says, but I don't think you, the, I don't think the Parks Committee is in complete agreement. So I, I, I think that we can, or probably decide to give this back to the Parks Recreation Committee to come back with us, with the, to us with the plan. But as, as of right now, uh, the council isn't gonna take an action to say, I approve this tree or I approve that tree. Uh, as this thing was set up, we, uh. And in fact, I'll make the motion to approve the shade tree program as described in the staff report and refer further action to the Parks and Recreation Committee. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion of second. We have a further discussion. Not hearing any, all those are favor, a motion to approve the shade tree program as described in the staff report, defer further action to the Parks and Recreation Committee, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Back to the park department.
Good. Now, can I just, uh, iterate, because I was designated to kind of, uh, do the fundraising for this. And, uh, the proposal, um, just a bullet point, things here to call a program, plant your roots in law. And then from that, put some bulletins out with the assistant.
I think that's a good idea, I think you need to put that together with your Parks Committee and bring that back to the council. I think if your Parks Committee, the council can't.
You know what, what we'd like to do.
I know that you wanna sell the trees and, and the type of trees, how many, where and everything, I think, that goes back to the Parks Committee. And, uh, I think that that decision should be made, uh, among you people.
Good.
Next up is decision, discussion, or decision and direction on holiday. Programming for winter twenty twenty-one. Mr. Connolly?
All right, now we get to talk about the fun stuff.
See our star back there, by the way.
That's one of, how many of those stars did we get, Max?
Eight.
Eight?
I think it should be eight. You got eight? Eleven.
Well, eight, yes. Yeah. There should be eight.
Okay. Good.
I think it was four gold locks there, and there, half of them are red and white, half of them blue.
So the, the first item, I ha, I have three items on the agenda that I'd like us to decide tonight. The first is the tree lighting ceremony, the second is holiday decorations for the bridge, and the third is where to put the decorations. Uh, we could possibly decide number or C later, later on, if, if we don't have time tonight, but what?
I think, I think the Parks Committee, I, I already have a layout of where everything's.
Okay.
To go. I think that decision's already made.
Okay, so, so the biggest decision is if we're doing a tree lighting ceremony, uh, when we're gonna do it, what date, who wants to volunteer to organize it? Getting that squared away and I understand there might be some decisions on holiday decorations as well. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. First of all, the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Will we hold the Christmas tree lighting ceremony? Yes?
Uh, with George representing the whole range. And so we are really interested and excited that you're considering doing a bridge lining.
Okay.
And the whole range would do what we've done in the past, to make cookies, get hot cider, a chocolate, to set up the tables and, and serve the people. And, um, this will be our contribution to the bridge lighting. And we hope that, uh, you will consider it and will forehand that it's a very important thing to do.
Okay. So that part will be done. Uh, do you have a date that you'd like, usually it's the first week of December, Max, is it the first week of December, first Saturday?
It's usually the first Saturday of December.
The thing is the sixth, it's from four. It's like a four, fours, is it?
Okay. Okay. Max, can you get a tree and decorations up, or you need the Grange people to help you on that?
I can get a tree and decorations up.
Okay, by the fourth? Okay. Are we gonna have any other activities there? Are we just gonna go there and, uh, light the tree and eat cookies and drink chocolate?
We did the Carol.
Okay, the, uh, is it got choir and shit, stuff like that?
We need to talk about COVID first, and this is why I brought this up. Um, as you know, we didn't have it the last year, but it has been huge the previous three years. Um, the biggest by far was two years, three times ago, but, um, I don't know what the COVID restrictions are gonna be come the first week in December. We can only guess they're gonna firmly be what they're gonna be now. Um, you know, so masks, obviously it's gonna be a large group of people. It is outdoor event, still gonna be a large group of people. Um, so if we, if, if this is something we decide to do, will we actually do the event? I'm, I'm fine with decorating the bridge like we done, you know, we did, did do it two years ago, we did it last year. Getting a tree, put the lights up. If we actually wanna do an event, um, we've really gotta make sure we do it the right way, you know, with Jeremy and the current guidelines that we can operate in. Um, this can get huge. A lot of people are craving the holiday time right now, you know, it looks like things are starting to kinda come back around. Halloween was huge. I'm sure everybody's seen that. It was a nightmare in town, so, um, I think it's gonna be huge. The, so I'm thinking, you know, like we've had in past, five, eight hundred people, and we've had
Yep.
lots and lots and lots of people, so, um, we can do the tree, totally fine with the tree, but if it gets bigger than that, you know, we're, we're talking a month from this coming weekend. Um, so that means checking all the lights and everything, getting stuff up, getting a boom. Um, if we want this to happen, staff, my staff is gonna need help this year. We're just the three of us. It's a lot to undertake in a short time. Um, like I said, we can get the tree, but if we're gonna do a lighting ceremony, we gotta get on it like you're pretty quick.
I, I think another consideration, Max, is we're gonna need help with the ones in the park. Well, I already talked to, uh, H and K and stuff, but I think we need to use some logistics on that as well.
Okay, that's the other reason I had to bring it up, cause we, we probably oughta put a dedicated outlet away from the reach of the children. We have had vandalism every single night in the park for the past week. Every single night. But they broke into the, uh, middle room today in the park on the way home, so, um, I think definitely getting them out of reach. I'm not saying they're not gonna be cambered with, but if we put the electric on, we're probably have a lot less chance of somebody on vandalizing.
What, um, what is the restrictions with COVID with a large gathering?
Well, if they can, if they can fill our university, a little view for a football game, you can have a tree light.
I said there were, nobody got enough.
The, the only thing I've been able to see on that is just the mask requirement. There's not the capacity limitations that we had this time last year.
So what else do we have to set up, though? I mean, I know in the past, there's been, you know, the choir and that stuff. I don't know if we can do that this, this late in the game.
We can fire some email for the school.
Yeah, I think that's just that's all.
Well, that's what I, I mean, we're, we're only a month away, so.
So they, are we talking about getting the band, the school band choir out there too, or just, uh, having a lighting and, and who's gonna coordinate that?
I'd be happy to do.
There you go.
And parking?
We couldn't hear you morning.
I'd be happy to coordinate with school to see what they're able to do.
See, talk to Jason about parking, or who needs to talk to him?
I can reach out to the.
I'd be more comfortable with you.
I'll reach out to him.
I can be your right-hand person, but I.
Uh, uh, I think that, uh, okay, so we got the choir, the band, the parking, uh, the lights, PA. Okay, we have the heater still? Okay.
Yeah.
The, so the, uh, main thing is, is we need to, all the people gonna be involved with that, need to probably get together within, with the city administrator in the next week or so to say what, what they've got finalized. So that, uh, once we get it all finalized, that he can go ahead and start publishing and getting it out and things like that, but.
And there's another group of singers in town that are good, you know, so it doesn't, you know, there's, there's some opportunities, options.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying, no, I, I agree with, I just saying we need to, they need to be organized, put together, know who's gonna do what. And then so that we can start advertising it and, uh, getting it out there. And, uh, like I say, Max, you get a crew of people to hang the stars and stuff like that.
I think it's time on social media to put out the, the call, calling all hands of volunteers that really wanted to decorate the city. There was a, a large chunk of people that were on social media last year, and I've had some reach out to me, I've got a few contact points. But I think re-engaging with those people and saying, now is the time that we need the help, you know, for, for these projects that you get the advocated support for. We need your help.
Do you wanna temporarily set some kind of a date or a tentative date?
Yeah, so for us, it's the twenty-seventh. For us, it's the twenty-seventh or the, or that, that weekend leading up, but I need to work with Max for his crew's availability. But I'd like to have, I'd like to have the park decorations up the week after things, the weekend after things get.
That's hard.
So, yeah, the stars, banners, and then, um, the, you know, the garland on the stage, and then there's some other lights in the community tree there that we still need to purchase as well for the caboose and for the, um, wherever we decide to put the community tree with. Wherever we put it, I think we better lock it down. So, sure, everybody knows, we're, our intent is to buy a live Christmas tree that's decent size, and that when we get more of the park, park, uh, laid out and platted at, at Rolling Rock, we will be planting that in the ground. That will become our growing live community tree that everybody wanted to have. So I've got, that's the intent of that, but for now, we don't have. It's easier to keep it in a large plant.
Do we wanna include a boat parade in this thing? If somebody's gonna talk to those people, they haven't done it for a couple of years. I know, I know it's, everybody enjoys seeing about their going in circles, so.
I would love it, but I don't know if it's big news anymore.
I don't, I don't even.
Well, the legalities are issued.
Really?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's what?
The boat parade has to be outside of the city and ran by the I's.
So somebody else has to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The risk managers took all the fun out of it.
Yeah, the boat has to be inspected by, uh, the boat people.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, it was a mess. It was lucky.
Okay, so if it's not, it's not, okay.
They'll vote for it.
Yeah.
Decorate your own boat.
I'll bring my kayak.
You have to put the word out.
There you go.
Maybe something will.
It's not the same thing that's organizing a city like COVID.
Well, then put the word out to everybody.
We need to let the fire chiefs know too, because they direct traffic down at the bridge.
If I didn't hear it, I actually need to, uh, get with whoever to get a timetable to work on the, uh, tree and the lighting and stuff like that, hang all the snowplikes and all that stuff. Are you gonna close the Brit, are you gonna close it off so people don't mess with it until we turn the lights on?
Yep.
Okay.
So how about, how does a mass email Monday sound?
Okay.
Um, we're gonna probably, I'll get everybody copied on it. I'll reach out to the school, the fire department.
Okay.
Um, let's get everybody talking about it and then let's get a good plan, get a book, a meeting, and get it happening.
I think people will like it.
Okay. When's the next person to move?
Well, we've not only getting on the schedule, but we should be, but we'd like to do that.
So, man, way to commit.
Anything else?
Could we, could we do something on the Thursday like we did before? That would give us basically two weeks before. So that would be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. And what, to meet at the park and kinda talk over things over the rest of the decoration and kinda get a plan going. We can do it on a weekday with Max as well.
Thirteen to November.
Thirteen or the twelfth would be fine as well. Cause that way Max is working that day, we could have Max put down and talk to us too. I can be a part of that. It'll be like half hour, hour one.
All time.
Um, how about, what works good for you, Matt?
I'm available anytime.
I, I am too, so what works good for you guys? You guys liked the morning last night. I can't do the twelfth, but I can do the, the day, but then that's could be unavailable, so. It'd be fine if you, that when we got the plan and, okay, I could.
So why don't we do the twelve, do what? Uh, nine? Nine o'clock, ten o'clock?
Yeah. Well.
Either way.
What's for you, Hall?
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, I don't.
Sure.
Retired.
Okay, anything else by anybody?
So nine.
Ruthie, you have something?
Yes, another thing, uh, big consideration is parking. As you know, that area is, does not hold a lot of cars, a lot of people are coming in. And so, uh, we contacted the school, someone contacted the school to drive us a shuttle, people back and forth, uh, leave their cars.
Okay.
School.
It'll probably a lot.
And drive down and then, you know, keep going and then pick them up if you turn.
Big Max is gonna talk to the school about that.
Or don't deal.
We got a good relationship with that.
Don't deal.
No, done deal.
These masks are terrible.
Anything else by anybody? We're adjourned at nine oh seven. You're joking, buddy.